All right, good afternoon, folks. My name is John Pavasik and I am Executive Director of the Central Pine Barrens Commission. I will be serving as the moderator for today's commission meeting. And before we begin the meeting, I would like to review a few information items and guidelines. This is the special January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting of the Central Pine Barrens Commission. And for the record, a quorum is present. The notice of this meeting followed the open meetings laws amended by Governor's Executive Order two zero two point one and as subsequently extended, which allows meetings to take place remotely. Today's commission meeting is solely for the commission to deliberate on the Lewis Road Plan Residential Development and its conformity to the standards and guidelines contained in the Central Pine Barrens Comprehensive Land Use Plan. In regard to public participation, please note that members listen to and view the meeting. However, because the record on this matter is closed, no verbal or written testimony or commentary will be taken today. This meeting is being recorded in the Zoom application and will be posted on the commission's website for viewing and listening after the meeting. Please note that the chat window is enabled only for troubleshooting. Commentary, testimony, or questions from the public will not be entertained via the chat function. As our prior Chair Carrie Meek Gallagher has resigned to accept a promotion to a new position in Albany D E C Headquarters, I would at this time like to ask the commission to please propose and adopt a motion to designate me as the Acting Non-Voting Chair for this meeting.
Can I make that motion?
Yes.
Okay, I shall move.
I will second, but do we first need to take attendance before we even do that?
Sure, we can take attendance. I'll go through the the role. So for Suffolk County, who is present, please?
Janet Longo. I think Andy's on, too.
Right, he's he's on mute right now. So I see Andy Freeling is on. Okay, for
Can I ask, for the purposes of determining a quorum, which commissioner is representing County Executive Bologna? I saw two people from the county at least.
So Janet or Andy, I guess, just at this point in time, can you
Yeah, and I just got a phone message from Dorian Dale looking for the link to the meeting.
I just sent it to him.
Yeah, I think Dorian will be joining us as well.
Okay.
And he does have it.
Who is the voting member there? Dorian.
Yeah, Dorian usually does it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, for the, oh, here's Dorian.
There he is. And we'll unmute him so he can hear us.
The link is generally, I find, a very well-kept secret. It seems to be like distributed in one place and then I can't find it in others. So it's a little dicey.
Dorian again.
Okay. All right, so Dorian, you are the voting representative today for the county? Okay, all right, so we'll move on to the town of Brookhaven. Roll call.
I'm here, Ed Romaine Supervisor.
Okay.
Emily Pines.
All right, thank you. For the town of Riverhead?
Yeah, Evette Aguirre. And Dan McCormick.
Thank you. And finally, for the town of Southampton?
Supervisor Schneiderman.
Okay, a quorum is present, then. We have
We do have other members of Southampton. I think Janice Shearer is on the call as well.
Okay.
But I am the voter.
Hi, Janice.
Hi, everyone.
Okay, we have a quorum. So Supervisor Romaine had made a motion to designate me as the Acting Non-Voting Chair for this meeting. Is there a second?
I will second.
Supervisor Schneiderman, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? The vote carries, the motion carries. Just like to ask folks to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic which stands one nation under the individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so folks on the commission should have received a number of documents. The first one should be a document entitled Lewis Road Plan Residential Development Subdivision Assertion of Jurisdiction Application Special Commission Meeting, Wednesday, January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. And this is a about a fourteen-page document that has a table which lists, starting on the second page, the standards and the applicable standards and guidelines, and then has a column as to whether or not yes, no, or conditionally conforms. Secondly, there was a a recent email from Supervisor Romaine of the town of Brookhaven in regard to the whether or not Lewis Road conformed to the standards and guidelines that had been redistributed to the commission members. And then finally, most recently, was a document distributed by Dorian Dale to the commission members in regarding to commentary from the Suffolk County Department of Health Services. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that should be all the documents that we've received. So as I mentioned before, the purpose of this meeting is to deliberate on the whether or not Lewis Road Plan Residential Development conforms to the standards and guidelines. And the results of this meeting will be utilized so that staff can, this will provide guidance, direction to staff in terms of a decision that the commission will make at its regular meeting next Wednesday on January twentieth. So at this point in time, I would suggest we start at the top and go through each standard and guideline, starting with standard number five point three point three point one point one, entitled Suffolk County Sanitary Code Article Six. There's some information provided there that the the project density at one unit per five acres as per town CR two hundred zoning district is below the minimum one unit per per acre health department requirement in groundwater management zone three requires Suffolk County Department of Health Services review and approval. There's a county health department letter dated December twentieth two thousand and nineteen, including comments and notice of incompleteness, which was most recently updated May eighth, two thousand and twenty, but Mr. Dale had provided more recent information. And the applicant is required to satisfy the Suffolk County Department of Health Services. So the question to the commission on this particular standard is whether or not the project complies, yes, no, or does it conditionally conform?
If you want, I'll go first on this. Of course, it has to comply with the Suffolk County Health Department, so until those details are worked out, obviously, it would be conditioned on that approval. But certainly, the density and the sewage treatment and all those things ought to conform. There's no reason to believe that it will not conform because it's significantly, you know, within their standards at, you know, a density of one unit per five acre. And if Dorian, I know you're with the county, but it seems pretty clear that that is a one of the standards that it does meet.
And any other commission members want to weigh in on this?
Yes, Dan from Riverhead. Dorian, I understand you sent out an email today with an attachment regarding Suffolk County Department of Health, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and that indicates that the application is still currently under review as of today, correct?
It is, and it's procedurally within the scope of the normal course of development in these matters, according to the Health Department.
Thank you.
All right, so Dan and Supervisor Aguirre, do you have a perspective on on this particular standard?
I have reviewed the nineteen ninety-three Pine Barrens Act, which includes the guidelines and the standards. My decision that I will be making will be made on the documents that were presented to me in the last year. I am looking at the merits of this application, and it appears to me that it does fall within the guidelines and the standards. I know that there is a tremendous amount of history. I was not aware of it when I took office a year ago. I did, Dan McCormick have briefed me on it, and I understand there's been some concerns on how the application got to the Pine Barrens, but I think that we have to base, well, I have to base my decision based on the Pine Barrens Act, not on any protocol that may or may have not been followed. And that's where I stand.
And to confirm Supervisor, we are in agreement that we believe, under the first guideline, that that is currently being addressed and we approve at this point, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I think the staff report of eight nineteen twenty also determined that this was met, this criteria, so.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
Town of Brookhaven Supervisor.
I have concerns that it would meet the Health Department requirements. The fact that their original application for the sewage treatment plant was deemed insufficient was a concern of mine. The notice of incomplete application, which was mentioned in their commission staff report as late as November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty, raises a lot of concerns regarding plant discharge, which I don't feel has been adequately addressed at this time. So I do have concerns about that, and that's why I raised that in an email I sent to commission staff and commission members.
Okay, so Supervisor, you feel it, no, it does not conform?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and finally, Suffolk County. Mr. Dale, do you have a perspective on whether or not the application conforms to this particular standard?
At this stage, we believe it does. It's still, as I suggested, awaits some more procedural consideration. But overall, based on the acreage and the sanitary flow involved, it appears that this development, this proposed development, does comply with the Suffolk County Sanitary Code Article Six density requirements for unsued areas even without a sewage treatment plant. However, to make a definitive determination as to whether an S T P is required due to density loads, the Health Department would require exact acreage of the golf course area, for example. So in effect, what is being suggested in their response is that everything that could conceivably be provided at this point has been, but it is still under consideration, subject to further input.
So so that would be conditionally, as far as the county is concerned, conditionally conforms?
Yes, and it will be required to do so, and the Health Department will be assiduously overseeing that process.
Okay. All right, thank you. So the next applicable standard is
I'm going to mark that, I'm sorry, John, I'm going to mark that as a conditional because it needs Health Department approval, which can't be granted yet until they finish their Health Department review. And the sense of the commission is three one on that.
Right.
Okay.
John. All right, the next standard is five point three point three point one point two Treatment Plant Discharge, where deemed practical by the county or state Sewage Treatment Plant Discharge shall be outside and down gradient of the Central Pine Barrens. And in regard to the review column, we have here that the application states it is not practical to locate the project S T P outside of and down gradient of the Central Pine Barrens and then require satisfaction of the Suffolk County Health Department requirements, including but not limited to the Suffolk County Department of Health Services Notice of Incomplete Application Sewage Treatment Plant dated December twentieth, two thousand and nineteen. So again, I I turn to the members of the commission as to their perspective on whether or not the the project conforms with yes, no, or conditionally conforms with this standard.
I'll go first again, you know, very similar to the last one. They have to conform, obviously. So it could be a condition, but it appears to conform. So, you know, I would, I would say that it does conform conditionally to this.
Okay, thank you. Okay, other members of the commission? At this point.
Well, John, can I just suggest if this is the form, so commission members bear with us. One of the joys of Zoom is that John and I haven't sat down and talked about it. So, John, I think the the structure of this meeting is good. I think the way you're doing it makes sense. So on each, why don't you do exactly what you're doing, and then we'll just have each time we'll go to Jay, Romaine, Riverhead, and then Dorian. That way, we just have like a process of flow. So Jay has a yes on a conditional Supervisor Romaine, and then we'll just, we'll continue. So it'll be Southampton, Brookhaven, Riverhead, and then the county.
That makes sense. Thanks, John.
I might point out, too, that the staff report again of eight nineteen twenty did conclude that it conformed to that standard.
We rely on experts' testimony on eight nineteen twenty by Dr. Gobler, who is, I think, a respected expert on nitrogen, as well as written comments in the Pine Barrens Society from two nineteen twenty and the Group for the East End from eight ten twenty and the Southampton Civic, that raises serious questions that the applicant has not met the guidelines in terms of nitrogen reduction. In fact, if I'm not mistaken, because this application has undergone multiple changes. So we're looking at it this today, but we're looking at that tomorrow and something else the following day because there's been several changes to this application. But it's my understanding that the applicant removed most of the nitrogen mitigation measures that had previously existed in the Hills P T D P D D application. So I have concerns about how the specific nitrogen calculations were done by the applicant and whether they meet that standard, so.
Can I ask the Supervisor, are you referring to the third standard? Because I'm still on the second standard.
I may be referring to the third standard. I'm concerned about nitrogen overall.
Yeah, and I'd be happy to speak to that, too, when we get to that standard. But right now, the Sewage Treatment Plant Discharge, I believe, is the standard we're discussing.
That standard hasn't been established yet because, as you know, the Health Department deemed their application incomplete. And I assume
I understood that's why I would conditional it, but condition it, but the the technology is a technology that is often approved by Suffolk County in terms of nitrogen removal, so. The you know, the discharge should meet the highest standards, obviously.
But whether it will or not, I don't know.
Right, that's why
I can't say yes to this.
Right, so in general, as you know, this this property could potentially be developed without sewage treatment plant and meet the guidance, the Health Department, but this is proposed to treat the sewage to remove nitrogen using a county acceptable technology. But I would condition it again, in saying that it must must be approved.
So Supervisor Romaine, do you feel that again, this conforms, does not conform, or conforms conditionally?
I can't even say if it conforms conditionally because I don't know what the Health Department is going to indicate. The the last indication I had from them that I received was that the application was incomplete. So it's difficult to judge an application that's incomplete.
Okay.
Town of Riverhead?
Conditional approval based on the Suffolk County Department of Health.
Thank you. Dorian Dale County? Did we lose Dorian? Andy Freeling needs to be unmuted.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Suffolk County believes that it is conditionally approvable.
Okay, thank you. All right, so that is three to one, so conditionally, conditionally conforms. So the next applicable guideline is five point three point three point one point three nitrate nitrogen goal. A more protective goal of two point five parts per million may be achieved for new projects through an average residential density of one unit per two acres through clustering or through other mechanisms to protect surface water quality for projects in the vicinity of ponds and wetlands. Regarding to the review, states the application states the project will achieve less than one milligram per liter and as low as zero point two six milligrams per liter. Nearest wetland is one thousand five hundred feet east of the site. Existing onsite nitrogen concentration groundwater is twenty-nine milligrams per liter. An irrigation fertigation well will be constructed in areas of high concentrations to supplement fertilizer applications on site. So again, I'll turn to the town of Southampton Supervisor Schneiderman and your perspective on this.
Sure, and I do have a lot of familiarity, obviously, with this development project, as it's been in front of the town for for quite some time and in different iterations. And Supervisor Brookhaven, Supervisor Romaine, mentioned some of the initial mitigative measures that were included in the first proposal, the the P D D. That was before the town. You know, sewage treatment, obviously, is one of the main things to reduce nitrogen. This fertigation concept, there is a nitrogen plume probably from farming in this area in the groundwater beneath this property. It's tested well above safe drinking water standards. And the idea behind this project, the fertigation is to irrigate with pumped groundwater, nitrogen-laden groundwater, and therefore they would need less fertilizer. The 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 grasses of the golf course and other vegetation would absorb some of that nitrogen and actually reduce nitrogen in groundwater. You know, the calculations, I originally asked Dr. Gobler to do calculations for me in terms of the golf course development versus a standard housing subdivision with various mitigation. There was some additional land that was being preserved that was part of this that calculation. But I was comparing it to the standard housing subdivision to make sure it had less nitrogen. There was also something that I imposed as a standard, which was a fertilizer cap, since there was some dispute as to the efficacy of this fertigation plan to require that they can only provide, I believe it was two pounds per maybe thousand square feet of land per year for the turf turf areas of the property. And they had agreed to that as part of the P D D. I've been told that they still would be willing to conform to that nitrogen cap. It's a fertilizer cap. It's it's unique. But it would guarantee that the the impacts of nitrogen from fertilizers would be very minimal. So I would suggest that we make that a a requirement or a condition if we can. They have indicated that they are willing to abide by that. So but I, you know, I I do think, though, in terms of the the goal, the goal is certainly met because it's well, well below what the the Pine Baron standard of two point five parts per million of nitrogen ought to be. We're talking about less than one part. Even a fraction of that. So I would say we could condition it on a a nitrogen cap, which they seem willing to do. Or, you know, I think it meets it as it is, so I would go either way and say that that standard is met.
Yes.
Yeah, we support that question.
We support the standard.
Okay. Um. So Town of Brookhaven Supervisor Romaine?
Well, I've been here for a number of years, and I've watched some change to application. So today, we're submitting this, tomorrow, we're submitting that, tomorrow, we're submitting that. And I just heard my esteemed colleague Jay Schneiderman, after everything is closed, done, say we can condition it. Why wasn't that done from the very beginning? Why wasn't that in this application? I also heard my colleague Jay Schneiderman say that many of the nitrogen mitigation measures that were included in the original application called the Hills was eliminated in this application. And then we have this untested method in terms of fermentation of reducing nitrogen. I have a lot of doubt about that, so I'm not going to be one that's going to be positive on this one.
Okay. Okay, thank you Supervisor Romaine. Town of Riverhead Supervisor Aguirre?
Yes, thank you. Riverhead would like to add that the application and the documentation within the application represents that this project will fall within those regulatory standards as required by the county. And obviously, even after this project is built out, Suffolk County Department of Health will still have regulatory authority over that particular area. I further understand there'll be a turf management program that will be governed and monitored by the town of Southampton regarding nitrogen loading in the area to ensure that those standards are going to be met from the inception of the property through its full build-out and thereafter. So at this point, I think the record is well documented regarding that particular issue. And again, the regulatory authority will continue by numerous agencies going forward. So I believe the Supervisor is in agreement.
I just have one quick question for Jay. How long have golf courses been in operation that we can say that they've been successful?
I had trouble hearing you about if you're asking me about other golf courses, we, you know, we have twelve other golf courses. Some of them are more recent, and they do have groundwater monitoring programs. We have experts that report to the town regularly in terms of any impacts. And we've seen through our our I P M programs that we're we're seeing nitrogen below that two point five, actually typically below two parts per million. So we've seen great success. Golf at Bridge and Sabonic have very similar programs where, you know, we do monitor regularly nitrogen loading. You know, visimeters and other devices, water testing, to make sure that there's no or limited impact to groundwater.
Right.
Just to reiterate, so Town of Riverhead, it's a yes in regard to conformity for this particular?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Okay, Suffolk County, Mr. Dale?
So it does appear that it conforms with the nitrogen concentration getting down to a point twenty-four milligrams per liter standard. And furthermore, I would also just like to add that fertigation is not unproven. And in fact, the the essential engineering science of fertigation is akin to shallow narrow drain fields. And ergo, it is an effective way of minimizing diminishing nitrogen loading.
Thank you. All right, so the majority of the commission then believes that conforms, three to one. So now we're on to standard five point three point three point two point one Suffolk County sanitary codes Article seven and twelve compliance. And under the review section, it states the sanitary code regulations apply to protection of water resources and wastewater management infrastructure and storage of hazardous and toxic materials. The project will use and store chemical compounds, such as fertilizers, pesticides, et cetera, in the maintenance area for the golf course and other landscaped areas. Applicant seeks Article twelve permit for the maintenance area. Suffolk County Department of Health Services letter dated December twentieth, two thousand and nineteen addresses the Article twelve permit. And finally, requires satisfaction of the requirements of the Suffolk County Department of Health Services. So I'll now turn to Town of Southampton Supervisor Schneiderman on this.
This is very similar to the other things that require County Health Department approval. They obviously must comply, so there's no reason to believe that they will not comply. So I just think to make that a condition is the approval, you know, Article twelve standards to make sure that they they receive all of their Suffolk County Department of Health Services permits.
Thank you Supervisor. Town of Brookhaven Supervisor Romaine?
I just have a point of information. Obviously, we know that this law is out there, and because laws exist and regulations exist, people have to Obviously, we know that this law is out there and because laws exist and regulations exist, people have to comply to them. Has the applicant submitted a comprehensive plan for the Department of Health Services to review in regard to this requirement?
I think that would be premature until they knew that they had the ability to progress the project to design every storage facility for fertilizers and pesticides, but.
No, I'm not talking about specifics. I'm talking about a general plan. This is, you know, this is how we intend to handle it. Three or four page description of their approach to this without, you know, schismatics or engineering plans, anything like that, but just a brief description of what their intention is and how they would intend to comply. Has that been done at all?
We don't have a copy of the Health Department submission, the submission to the Health Department. So we're not certain what was submitted to them, but in the Health Department's 2019 response to the applicant on the incompleteness of the application, they did raise the issue of an Article 12 permit. So there must have been enough information in the submission that that did address these items related to Article 12. So but again, we don't, we don't have a copy of the information.
But I request, I know Dorian's representing the county executive. Is it possible for the commission staff to get a copy of that application? And why it was deemed incomplete and what it said vis a vis Article 12? Is that possible? These are public documents, aren't they?
Surely, surely. I think that certainly is a reasonable request predicated on what is in fact required at this point in time in terms of submission. So we will certainly pursue that at your request Supervisor Romaine.
Thank you. I'm going to withhold judgment that information is forthcoming to the commission staff on this item.
Ollie, can you just unmute Janice here, please? Thank you.
I just wanted to note that I think in the integrated management plan, there's discussion about that Article 12 permit. And in and also in the EIS, just to, but all that information should be brought forward if you don't already have it.
I don't think the commission staff does have it. Once they have it, and I'll wait for the commission staff to educate me and the other members as to what it says and why they deemed the applicant's application incomplete. So I would like that. And as I said, I'm going to withhold judgment on this item until that information is forthcoming.
Okay. Town of Riverhead Supervisor Aguirre and Dan.
Did you hear that, John?
No, I'm sorry.
There was a yes.
A yes, okay. So a conditional, conditional yes?
Yeah, conditional, yes.
Okay. And then, thank you. And then finally, Dorian Dale.
We'll go along with the conditional yes at this point.
Okay. All right. So that's three, three commission members believe that it conditionally informs. And Supervisor Romaine has reserved judgment on that. So we can move on to the next one. On page three of your document, this is standard 5.3, 3.3, 3.1, significant discharges in public supply well locations. Location of nearby public supply well shall be considered in applications involving significant discharges to groundwater.
I'm sorry, John?
Yes.
Thirty minutes, 38 minutes in, we're through three standards. Has everyone received this document?
I can get it. Yeah, I don't have it in front of me, but I can tell you.
It was posted on the web, right?
Yes.
So Jonathan, you would just want to read just the standard rather than, because everyone has access to it?
Okay, I'm, yeah, good point. Good point.
He wants to save every last minute with us.
That's right.
You gotta go, John. You gotta go.
Okay, John. All right. So on this one, so Town of Southampton Supervisor Schneiderman.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay here. I'm not really seeing any significant discharges in the capture zones, the ones that were mentioned where there's existing public water supply. So it it seems to me that this this is met and I, that's what I'm sensing from the staff report too. There is a four acre parcel that is also being provided for Suffolk County Water Authority in a, to the, I guess, to the east here too, but it it does seem to meet the standards as well.
Thank you Supervisor. Okay, Town of Brookhaven Supervisor Romaine.
I'm concerned that private well protection guidelines can't be met without some type of approval or review by the New York State DEC. And I don't think that has been done.
So you you feel this does not conform at this time?
At this time, and I, given the reasons why, I mean, I I would hope that there was a submission to DEC on private well protection. And because I know their approval is needed of that, and I didn't see that in any of the documents that I received.
Supervisor Romaine, I'm sorry, just for clarification. Are you speaking about private well protection? I thought we were still on the public supply.
All right, I'm talking about private well protection.
Okay. Yeah. So we're talking, we're talking about the the one above that public supply well locations. So.
I I'm going to let that pass. I'm going to stand and let the majority prevail on that.
Okay. Okay, thank you Supervisor. Town of Riverhead Supervisor Aguirre.
Yeah, a conditional approval?
What's the condition on that one?
I believe the dedication to Suffolk County is a condition regarding those four acres. Is that my understanding? I don't think that, no, it's not a condition. That's just a factual statement from the record.
That's already part of the proposal.
Yeah, that's not a condition.
Okay, full approval.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
It's not clear whether Suffolk County Water Authority will need that well field. But.
And I'll note that while the Pine Baron staff is employees of Suffolk County Water Authority, the Water Authority's engineers, hydrogeologists and operations team is looking at that, not any of the people on this call.
Thanks, John. Finally, Suffolk County, Dorian Dale.
So just very quickly before I give you our stand on this particular number, even though I know these documents have gone out, they're in front of people. There are considerable number of documents. I understand Mr. Malazo is concerned about time constraints, but very quickly, I just want to read the very last portion of the one pager that came out from Health because it addresses this continued reference in completeness. And I think it's important that they be clarified for the record. And so I will read as follows. The Suffolk County Department of Health can provide additional input on Pine Baron's guidelines. Two and a half milligrams per liter overall, ten recharged and when EIS findings processed and the sighting reports are complete. Moving forward, the following items must be completed prior to the issuance of an approval for construction for the project. Completion of the engineering report for acceptance by both the offices of Suffolk County Department of Health, Suffolk County Department of Public Works. Review and acceptance of detailed plans and specifications for proposed SDP. Review and acceptance of site plans showing collection systems and water distribution systems. Review and acceptance of the proposed water distribution system report. An application to the proposed subdivision and approval of same approval from other governmental agencies, for example, DVW, New York State DEC, Town of Southampton, Pine Baron's Commission. Secret determination, citing reports from Department of Health, Office of Water Resources, Speedy's permit application, individual residential applications and fees. So clearly there remains a considerable amount to be done, but as I suggested earlier, that's part of the procedural considerations. And yes, on this last point, the county does approve.
Okay, thank you. So that's three for conformance and Brookhaven Town abstains. Next guideline, 5.3, 3.3, 3.2, private well protection. Suffolk County Department of Health guidelines for private wells should be used for well and protection. Town of Southampton Supervisor Schneiderman.
All right. So the the project calls for two private irrigation wells. And I I believe that it's 35 million gallons per year, not the 51 million gallons per year. I don't believe there's any private wells that are impacted by that or the sewage treatment facility. I should say that this area of East Quogue has had some issues with groundwater, particularly because of emerging contaminants largely associated from firefighting foams. And we have spent about $4 million in this area connecting private well users to public water supplies. I don't know of any private wells along along Spiny Road, if there are. But I I don't see how this project would impact any private wells whatsoever. So I would say that that standard is met.
Okay, thank you. Town of Brookhaven Supervisor Romaine.
And I had commented before, I thought we were on private wells, that you really can't demonstrate that without DEC approval. And we did not get anything from DEC saying that it met that standard. I have concerns if there are other private wells in that area that they could be impacted by this development. So I'm going to reserve judgment on this as well because it's one of the things that I'd say yes to.
I I don't object to conditionally approving it, you know, with the, you know, pending DEC approval. I don't know that that's a requirement under the guidelines for DEC approval, but I don't object to that if other people want to put that in. If they need it, they'll have to get it either way.
So you you change your perspective to conditional, conditional?
Let me hear from the other members.
Okay, so Town of Riverhead Supervisor Aguirre.
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry. It's my understanding that DEC review and approval would be required as well as the fact that potentially Suffolk County Department of Health on the issue of the well permit. So if needed, so the bottom line is Riverhead would conditionally approve subject to those other agencies à la what we've done earlier in the early review items.
Okay.
Conditional approval?
Okay, thank you. Suffolk County, Dorian Dale. Okay, and going back to Supervisor Schneiderman, do you want to change that to a conditional?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. All right. So that's three to one. So the the majority of the commission finds it conforms. Standard 5.3, 4.1 through 4.4 wetlands not applicable. Finally, standard 5.3, 3.5, 1 stormwater runoff, stormwater runoff originating from development on the property must be recharged on site unless surplus capacity exists in an offsite drainage system. So Town of Southampton Supervisor Schneiderman.
Yeah, I mean, they worked this quite a bit to try to contain all stormwater runoff on site. You probably have seen the 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 DRA map, but there's extensive areas for recharge. All waters on this site will be contained on the site without even a recharge basin. So I feel like they have worked really hard to meet this requirement and I believe they have, they have met this.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Romaine, Town of Brookhaven.
I don't have an objection to this one.
Okay. Thank you. Town of Riverhead Supervisor Aguirre.
She's muted.
All right, we'll go to Dorian. We'll come back to you, Dan.
Suffolk Suffolk County, Dorian Dale.
Approve.
Approve? Okay, thank you. Town of Riverhead?
Approved.
Thank you. Okay, so that's four approvals. It conforms. Okay, next one, guideline 5.3, 3.5, 2 natural recharge and drainage. Natural recharge areas enter drainage system designs that cause minimal disturbance of native vegetation should be employed where in lieu of recharge basins or ponds that would require removal of significant areas of native vegetation. Town of Southampton Supervisor Schneiderman.
Yeah, I spoke to this a little bit on the last standard, but there's some 40, 40 DRAs that will capture recharge. And there's two ponds. Originally, I think there were three ponds, but they have been shrunk in size now and they're using, you know, smaller areas as ponds, but the, you know, they they clearly, to me, they clearly meet this requirement in terms of natural recharge and drainage. They went to great lengths to meet this and if you look at the diagram, you'll see throughout the entire property, these these DRA areas.
Okay, thank you. All right. So you find it conforms. So Town of Brookhaven Supervisor Romaine.
I don't know if this project can meet the guidelines simply by relying on natural topography in lieu of recharge basins without approval of a swept stormwater pollution prevention plan by the Town of Southampton and by the New York State DEC. This would be the same also regarding any guidelines for soil erosion and stormwater runoff. I didn't see approval of a swept plan by the town or by DEC. Now, I don't know, Jay, if they've submitted a plan, a swept plan to the town.
I I do have a plan, but I, you know, maybe Janice can speak to this. But they do have to meet, obviously, all the town requirements as well.
We did preliminarily receive some and the staff report mentions that there was you know, they had a number of comments about a year ago, but any now with sort of the project redesign through the preliminary plat process, I mean, the final plat process, they would come back in and finalize a SWIP with the town engineer who administers that for the state. So it would be through the town.
And usually they don't start construction until the town gives them that.
Yeah, they can't start construction until that.
And they made a submission last year, but as we all know, this project has changed multiple times. And you can't say whether they meet the guidelines or not. So I'm going to withhold judgment on this. My answer on this.
All right, thank you. Town of Riverhead Supervisor Aguirre.
Thank you. The Town of Riverhead would respectfully note that the SWIP as initially approved by the Town of Southampton will also be regulated and monitored by the New York State DEC pursuant to the Town of Southampton Speedy's permit, which is a permit that obviously each of the respective towns and the county are all under in terms of regulatory control by the New York State DEC. So the Town of Riverhead is comfortable with this particular because you'll have not one but two separate regulatory agencies. That being obviously Southampton and the State DEC monitoring both drainage and grading. So Riverhead is comfortable with that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Is that a, is that then a condition that conforms with the town's SWIP?
Yeah, it's it's my understanding, Jay, that grading and drainage are necessary components of the SWIP.
Right.
Southampton will necessarily have to review and approve pursuant to its own Speedy's permit. So it is technically a condition subject to the final plat approval and the final SWIP as opposed to the preliminary being approved.
Because, you know, we have the November 18th, 2020 Nelson Pope and Voorhees Plan that shows all of the DRAs, the 40 DRAs. So do you want to make make it subject to that plan and then subject to the town? Is that what you're saying, Dan?
Yes, I I'm comfortable with that again because the DEC will be regulating and monitoring that SWIP from an approval aspect and monitoring aspect. So Riverhead is comfortable with Southampton's own obligation to indicate that that SWIP is in conformance with the state.
Okay, all right. So you're you're saying conditional conformity. Supervisor Schneiderman, do you want to just say it's also conditional?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. And then finally, Suffolk County, Dorian Dale.
Again, this is another example of procedural and it's predicated upon, you know, future approvals in this case of SWIP and the DRAs are under consideration. So I will go, the county will go with a conditional approval.
Okay, thank you. So that's three conditional approvals. So the majority of the commission finds that conform. All right, on the next page, guideline 5.3, 3.5, 3.3 ponds. Ponds should only be created if. Ponds should only be created if they are to accommodate stormwater runoff, not solely for aesthetic purposes. Town of Southampton Supervisor Schneiderman.
Um, yeah, I think, although there are some aesthetic positives to having ponds, um, the ponds are retention ponds. Re- remember that the, uh, you may not know this, all the, all the greens are going to be lined here. Uh, the areas where you have most intense use of agrochemicals. Um, and then they are, um, then pitched or pumped into these retention ponds. Um, they are, I believe it's less acres than in the staff, uh, rubric that was put together. I think it's, uh, one pond is one acre and one is two point one seven acre for a total of three point one seven acres. Um, so, uh, they're certainly not solely for aesthetic purposes. They are definitely to accommodate, uh, stormwater runoff and also to attenuate pollutants. So, uh, I would say that, uh, they have met this guided, this guideline.
Okay, thank you. Town of Brookhaven Supervisor Romaine.
I'm going to rely on the Pine Balance Commission Staff Report of November eighteenth, twenty twenty, uh, indicating that the total area of each pond, including the unmarked pond, must be identified to demonstrate compliance with the guidelines regarding ponds. And I don't believe that has been accomplished yet. So I'm going to withhold judgment on this one.
Okay. Thank you Supervisor. All right, Town of Riverhead Supervisor Aguirre.
Yes, thank you. Again, in the interest of consistency, I would conditionally, Riverhead has respectfully requested that this be conditionally approved, subject to the Town of Southampton's approval of the SWIP. Since necessarily the ponds will also be used to accommodate stormwater, stormwater runoff, which is a necessary component of the SWIP as regulated by the DEC. So we would have the same application to conditionally approve as we did with the last review item.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Supervisor Schneiderman, would you, uh, change to a, a conditional conformity?
That's fine.
Okay, and finally, Suffolk County, uh, Dorian Dale?
This is our conformity.
Thank you. Okay, so that's three, uh, members that find it conditionally conforms. Thank you. Uh, guideline five point three point three point five point four, natural topography.
I'm marking, John, I'm marking that three with an extension.
Correct.
And these are not votes, so the commission's not taking a vote. They're just giving their sense of where we are, um, in a, akin to a work session that you're all familiar with.
Thanks, John. Uh, guideline five point three point three point five point four, natural topography in lieu of recharge basins, so natural swales and depressions should be permitted and encouraged instead of excavated recharge basins whenever feasible.
And then, uh, the Riverhead will say it's, if it's to be approved, it's conditional. So Jay, with that caveat? Sure, well, yeah, it has to meet the town and the DEC on the SWIP. So, um, and there are no, apparently no natural, uh, depressions here, drainage suppression. So, uh, if there were, I'm sure they'd be used, but instead they're creating these forty DRAs. So, uh, uh, you know, uh, you know, I believe this condition is met, but we can do it conditionally.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, uh, Town of Brookhaven Supervisor Romaine.
My understanding, and I could be wrong, is that when someone comes in to apply for a development, usually the SWIP plan is submitted before the development is approved or is submitted conjointly, uh, seeking approval. It's usually a predicate. It usually doesn't follow afterwards with the assumption that because it's a regulation, it will be done and you can improve the development. And then afterwards, oh, well, we don't have to worry about the SWIP because it's a regulation, so it will be done. It doesn't have to be predicated on a SWIP plan being, uh, set up front. So, no, I'm not in favor of this.
Uh, there was one done up front. Janice, could you speak to that? I, it has to be modified because of the changes, but.
For the other, for the hills, not for this.
No, for this as well. Janice, could you speak to that?
Yes, I believe that they gave, um, a response back last year. A SWIP, a draft SWIP was filed to the town. The state doesn't, we, we review the SWIP, um, in conformance with the Speedy's and MS four permit. Uh, and so we did get that town engineer provided comments. And now they'll have to revise that SWIP and formalize it and finalize it in order for it to be approved. After this approval, there, there's really, uh, I think the, the order of things is not lining up, but yes, they did initially submit a draft.
But not something that was approved?
Not yet, no.
And when do you expect that to be reviewed and approved if this development moves forward?
I think, um, pending any real, uh, determination by the commission, then they would come back in, um, to the town. Of course, it can't be done through the subdivision process until the stay is lifted. So there is a lawsuit, there's litigation there. So I don't know at what time that's appropriate.
Great, thank you. All right Supervisor Romaine, so, uh, are you still, uh, feel that this does not conform?
At this point, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Conditionally, at this point, doesn't matter. I know we are conditionally approving. I'm conditionally saying we sure approve.
Okay.
Condition is met.
Thank you. Uh, Town of Riverhead Supervisor Aguirre.
Conditional, um, on the SWIP approval.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, if I could add, if I could interject, John, I'm sorry. Um, Supervisor Romaine, your points are well taken. I, I did want to note, because this is an area that I deal with in the Town of Riverhead, no soil disturbance can take place until such time that a SWIP is approved. In the event that the Town of Southampton does not approve the SWIP and there is soil disturbance, by DEC regulation, the Town of Southampton will be personally liable for that particular matter as a violation of its own Speedy's permit. So you really have two regulatory agencies involved here. First, of course, the Town of Southampton and their Town Engineering Department and Planning Department. But secondly, of course, the DEC regarding that Speedy's permit. So it's the town's position, Riverhead's position, that given those regulatory requirements, conditional approval based on approval of the SWIP by Southampton is more than adequate in this particular circumstance. But again, your points are well taken on what you've raised concerning that particular timeframe and the approval process.
Thank you, Dan. Uh, and finally Suffolk County, Dorian Dale?
Conditional approval.
Thank you. All right, so that is, um, uh, three, uh, conditional approvals, uh, conformity and one conditional no by Supervisor Romaine. So the majority finds that it conforms conditionally. Uh, guideline five point three point three point five point five, soil erosion and stormwater runoff. During construction, the standards and guidelines promulgated by the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation pursuant to state law, um, design, prevent soil erosion control, uh, stormwater runoff should be adhered to. Uh, so Town of Southampton Supervisor Schneiderman.
I guess this just becomes a condition. This is during construction, they need to, they need to adhere to the DEC. Uh, so that, that's obvious. So if you, uh, you know, if they don't, they don't meet the standard. So I would say that just, just a simple conditional approval on this.
Okay, thank you. Okay, you got Town of Brookhaven Supervisor Romaine.
I'm going to withhold judgment on this. Um, a long time ago, someone told me no is no until you say yes. But yes is yes from the moment you say it.
Okay.
So I think you understand what I'm, I'm talking about here.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Um, so Town of Riverhead Supervisor Aguirre.
Okay, conditional subject to the Southampton SWIP.
Okay, conditional approval. Okay, and finally, uh, Suffolk County, Dorian Dale?
I am very tempted to make a quip, uh, on the tailgate of Supervisor Romaine's observation, but, uh, withhold and simply say conditional approval.
Okay, so that's three, uh, conditional approvals and one, uh, abstention by, uh, by the Town of Brookhaven. Uh, standard five point three point three point six point one vegetation clearance limits. Site plan surveys and subdivision maps shall delineate the existing naturally vegetated areas and calculate those portions of the site that are already cleared due to previous activities. Areas of the site proposed to be cleared combined with previously cleared areas shall not exceed the percentages in figure five one to the extent that a portion of the site includes core property. And for the purposes of calculating the clearance limits, the site shall be construed to be the combined core and CGA portions. So vegetation clearance limits, Town of Southampton Supervisor Schneiderman.
Well, this is one of those mathematical criteria. So this has been calculated out. Uh, I think staff, uh, concluded that they conform. Uh, you know, I'll point out that, um, the hundred and seventy-one point eight four acres, um, that is being cleared does include ten point, now roughly ten acres, ten point oh three acres that have been previously cleared as well. But, um, they, uh, they meet or exceed the requirement there, uh, based on the calculations that were done.
Okay.
And also, also they have to meet the stricter town requirements, which, uh, um, they appear to as well, but they will have to do that. Um, there's different ways to meet the town requirements, but, uh, there is a, a larger set aside for open space with the town.
Okay, so that's a, a yes for Southampton. Uh, Supervisor Romaine, Town of Brookhaven?
I'm concerned that the project fails to provide minimal, uh, buffers, particularly on the east side of the property, to offer sufficient protection to the trails and other cultural resources.
Supervisor, that is actually a, a subsequent, uh.
I don't have your guideline, so I'm just.
Yeah, we're just on the vegetation clearance limits, which is an arithmetical calculation.
If it's arithmetic, then I have no objection.
Okay, so, so that's a yes? Okay, so, thank you. Uh, so, Town of Riverhead?
Based on the calculations concerning the clearance and the limits, we approve.
Okay, thank you. And finally Suffolk County, Dorian Dale?
Approve.
Yeah, thank you. So that's four, for finding that the, uh, the project conforms. Thank you. Okay, so next page, page five of this document. At the top, standard five point three point three point six point two, unfragmented open space. Subdivision on site design shall support preservation of natural vegetation in large unbroken blocks that allow contiguous open spaces to be established when adjacent parcels are developed. Subdivision on site design should also be configured in such a way so as to prioritize the preservation of native Pine Barrens vegetation to the maximum extent practicable. Uh, so back to the Town of Southampton Supervisor Schneiderman.
But, you know, this is one I've wrestled with probably the most in terms of open space. There is a, uh, this is a six hundred acre property, slightly more than six hundred acres. There's approximately four hundred acres that will remain in open space. But in terms of, uh, how it is configured, originally, this was a, a, a major problem, whether it was in large contiguous blocks, uh, and unfragmented. And tremendous revisions were done to this to satisfy, uh, my concerns, those concerns raised by the planning department, Marty Shea. Um, boy, they, they moved the housing away from the core areas. Uh, they, in fact, uh, reconfigured the housing completely. They moved even the playing surfaces away to try to maximize the, uh, the, the open space in terms of being contiguous. Um, you know, it's complicated property. There is a sand mine next door, um, to this. It's a, it's disturbed on the other side, it's open space, adjoining parcel. But I can't see how you can do a better job than the way they've configured this. They've really have clustered, pushed everything south, um, you know, to the maximum extent possible. I think in a housing subdivision, a standard housing subdivision, it might even be harder to do. But because with the golf course, they have smaller houses and they're sort of aggregating lawns into the golf course, um, they're able to do it. Um, but they seem to me to have met that criteria. If you look at the changes, and I know Julie provided everybody with those, uh, site plans where you can see where the layout is, it's hard to imagine a more clustered, more compact development here. Um, so they seem to me they have met that requirement that they have, uh, created the largest, uh, blocks of open space and the least fragmentation possible. So, uh, uh, I, I think they meet this criteria. There's lots of different numbers that get tossed around on this. But, uh, um, you know, I, I think based on the most recent configuration, they have achieved this. Um, it's, you know, obviously it's a site subjective criteria. Somebody may feel that they could compress it even more. But, uh, if you look at those large blocks, I, it's hard to say that they have not created large blocks of contiguous open space. But that, that's my feeling on it.
Okay, so that's a yes from Southampton, thank you. Uh, Town of Brookhaven Supervisor Romaine?
I'm going to, again, quote the commission staff report of November eighteenth, twenty twenty, which points out that, uh, there are many types of open space identified by the applicant. And I put open square, i- in their report, open space was in quotes, identified by the applicant that have not been quantified. The commission report further states, and I quote, "The term 'open space' is used by the applicant and its usage does not imply that open spe- space meets the plan's requirement." So based on that, from the commission's report, I'm voting no.
Okay, I was on a different configuration, Ed. It was modified since then.
It was modified since, since November eighteenth, twenty twenty? I thought we closed this. Are you saying it was open again?
Oh, I thought you were talking about the original, I thought you were talking about the original staff report.
No, I'm, the report of November eighteenth, twenty twenty. I thought I was pretty clear when I stated that.
Okay, I, I might have misheard.
So I'm relying on the commission's report. Obviously, I'm a supervisor in a town where this development is not taking place. I have to rely on the commission and their reports. When I read that report, that raised a lot of concerns to me. And that report was just less than two months ago. So unless there's been major changes and we haven't been notified of it, my vote is no.
Okay, thank you very much Supervisor Romaine. Uh, Town of Riverhead Supervisor Aguirre.
Let's go to Dorian and we'll get back to them.
Okay, Suffolk County, oh, oh, wait, uh.
Suffolk County.
There are no.
Hi, sorry, we keep on checking out on you guys, it's not intentional.
That's fine.
I see that the northern holes, which were, which created fragmentation, that we configured and now they're more closely clustered and, uh, increasing the open space. So we approve.
Okay, thank you. Okay, finally, Suffolk County, Dorian Dale?
Uh, yes, by our reckoning, it's, um, been compacted to, uh, really a maximum extent, so, um, we approve.
Okay, thank you. So majority of the commission, uh, three out of the four members find that it conforms. Thank you. Uh, standard three, five point three point three point six point three fertilizer dependent vegetation limit. Uh, Town of Southampton Supervisor Schneiderman.
All right, so, um, the rubric I have says eighty-eight point three six acres or maximum of fifteen percent fertilizer dependent vegetation on the six hundred and eight acre site. Um, does conform. I know that this is not a standard golf course, you know, people are familiar with. There's a lot of indigenous vegetation, a lot of native plants. And, uh, you know, with the attempt to create sort of a, a natural setting as this is played, a lot of the indigenous vegetation won't be touched at all and other areas will actually be replanted with, uh, native vegetation. So, uh, I, I know that the applicant has worked very hard with, uh, you know, with our planning department on this issue of making sure that, uh, you know, native plants are being used. Maybe I will kick it over to Janice to add more to that. But, uh, um, I, I believe that they have met this standard. Janice? You're muted. Still muted.
You, Janice?
I'm so sorry about that. Yes, I would agree with the supervisor that, that, that to the extent that they have revised the plans and made all the modifications, um, I would say that, and the limits of the fertilizer dependency and also the ITHMP plan, which caps their fertilizer amounts um, and puts all of that into that monitoring plan, that they have to be checked. And they, they give us their data, um, if they're, you know, the same way those other two golf courses we mentioned earlier, Sabonic and the Bridge, that fertilizer dependent vegetation and that cap of fertilizer use will all be, um, clearly identified in their, in their management plan.
Okay, thank you, Janice.
Thank you.
Uh, finally, uh, to, uh, secondly, to Town of Brookhaven? Finally, to secondly, to Tana Brookhaven Supervisor.
Obviously, I have my concerns based on expert testimony that was provided by Dr. Goldbach on August eighteen twenty twenty. Also, my concerns rest with the second with the next application that was made, which is now called Lewis Road. That many of the nitrogen mitigation measures that were in the hills application disappeared from this application. So I have my concerns. I have no way of judging. I'm just going to. Say no for the time being.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Tana Riverhead Supervisor.
Approve.
Approved, thank you. Okay, and finally Suffolk County, Dorian Dale.
Used to be on course, so approval.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so that's three out of the four members of the commission finds that it conforms. Okay, standard five point three point three point six point four native plantings. Tana Southampton Supervisor Schneiderman.
You know, same comments as before. We've worked extensively with the applicant on the planting plan and the list. It's there. There's an extensive list of native plants that are going to be employed here. And I, you know, I'll turn it over to Janice again, but I believe that they clearly meet this requirement.
Janice, you have any comments?
You have to unmute, Janice.
It's not me. It's when I when I mute myself, so you don't hear my dog barking and then. And then I stay muted and I can't get off it. I'm sorry. Yes, I would just say that the. There's also not in addition to what the supervisor just said that they'll. Read in that Nelson and Pope response, my understanding was that they're going to transplant veg any vegetation removed. Reuse native soils and seeds wherever feasible. And you know, any kind of protection of native species is part of their landscape, any additional landscaping. That they're providing will have to be native plantings. So I think, you know, I agree that it's consistent with that standard.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Janice. Thank you Supervisor Schneiderman. So Tana Brookhaven Supervisor Romaine.
I have no objection to this.
Okay, thank you. All right, so Tana Riverhead Supervisor Aguirre.
Approval.
Thank you. County, Mr. Dale.
Approve.
Thank you. Okay, four members that find it conforms. Thank you. Okay, next page. Standard five point three point three point seven point one special species and ecological communities. Were a significant negative impact upon a habitat essential to those species identified on the. Near maintained lists as rare, threatened, endangered, or of special concern. Upon natural communities classified by New York State Natural Heritage Program. As G one, G two, G three, or S one, S two, or S three. Or in any federally listed endangered or threatened species as proposed. Appropriate mitigation measures as determined by the appropriate state, county, or local government agency. Shall be taken to protect these species. So Tana Southampton Supervisor Schneiderman.
Yeah, you know, this is a place that I have some concerns. You know, our senior environmental analyst has raised some concerns about the lack of specific conservation plans for certain. Protected species threatened or endangered, the the northern long-eared bat, the whipple will. Several other birds as well. So I like, I think. It can't proceed with the town and with the DC without specific conservation plans. I I wish that the applicant had provided those plans. You know, I'll I'll turn it over to Janice a little bit on that. But you know, you can't, they won't be able to construct without acceptable plans. In terms of habitat protection for those those rare or endangered or threatened species. But Janice, can you add to that?
Sure, I think the most, you know, there there's several important species and when it comes to the northern. Long-eared bat, it they're going to have to comply with what it's so it's kind of along the lines of that conditional. Approval, they can only clear vegetation within a certain window of time as prescribed by DC. That when you you know, that any other species along, you know, that's protected, those habitats have to, we would put limits of clearing fencing or. You know, abide by the windows for for any removal of those habitats. So that's like a condition. And then I would note that in the Nelson and Pope responses and and from the DEIS, there was a buck moth survey. Provided back in two thousand nine from two thousand nine and. The the report provided to the commission. States that the conditions haven't changed since that time, but they would have to update something along those lines to satisfy DC. When it comes to any of those things. So I I do agree that that's a condition. Here where where those plans need to be created for the satisfaction of those agencies. And and once they do that, then they can commence, but before that they wouldn't be able to be to begin.
Marty also mentioned the eastern hog nose snake and the grasshopper sparrow. In addition to the other ones that Janice and I mentioned, so. But we will need that, and I would say that it would require that as a condition. That if those plans acceptable to the town and the DC are submitted prior to any construction.
So that would be a conditional approval Supervisor Schneiderman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Romaine.
For all the reasons that Supervisor Schneiderman has stated, plus the coastal buck moth. Which I also believe is endangered and threatened by this project. I'm going to give this conditional disapproval because. All of a sudden, we are assuming that just because it's a condition. And there's other agencies regulating it, that it's all going to be met. I'm not so sure that that's the case, so I'm going to give a conditional disapproval.
Okay, thank you. Tana Riverhead.
A conditional approval.
Conditional approval, thank you. And then finally Suffolk County, Mr. Dale.
So as it relates, I'm going to say a couple of things. As it relates to the bug moth, apparently it. It favors scrub pine, and that is only in the northern portion of the of the property, which will not be developed. So its habitat should not be disturbed. And finally, as it relates to hog nose snakes. My my son used to pick up a couple of them down here on the barrier beach, on the Jones Barrier Beach back in the days when we also had. Just a plethora of bufo toads. The bufo toads just got up and somehow. Disappeared and so did the hog nose snake. So I would assume that there's going to be some sort of symbiosis as it relates to how these species actually. You know, interface and really continue to make their habitat in this particular area. Just throwing that out there because it's not just individual species. It's very contingent on, you know, what in fact, you know, not only their habitat, but. Clearly, the kinds of diets that they favor and that often it's dependent on whether there are other species available. So just. I think it's a conditional approval, but I think this is always a fairly complex proposition.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Dale. So that's three commissioners find that it. Conditionally conforms and one that it conditionally does not conform.
I'm just, yeah, just just take a little, we're moving along nicely. I'm not sure. There's the puppy.
I knew what's gonna happen, sorry.
That's fine. So the. I'm not sure a conditional no, it's either it's conditional yes or no. So we're just going to mark Supervisor Romaine's as no's because I don't know how you do a conditional no.
Okay, thank you.
Housekeeping, thank you.
Thank you for that clarification, John. All right, the next item is guideline five point three point three point eight point one clearing envelopes. Clearing envelope should be placed upon lots within a subdivision so as to maximize the placement of those envelopes on slopes less than ten percent. Tana Southampton Supervisor Schneiderman.
So I know this was a big concern for our senior environmental analyst, Marty Shay, and. Worked for months with this applicant redesigning this to avoid steep slopes. You know, originally, there was some, I think, four hundred thousand cubic yards of of material that was going to be moved off of this property. Now it's zero. They're not moving anything off the property. They have redesigned everything to the greatest degree to avoid. Steep slopes. There's about one percent or maybe one point one percent of all the steep slopes. On the larger property, the the six hundred plus acres that are are being impacted. That is pretty good. Some of it is where two roads are crossing. Typically, at the town level, we don't. We sort of exempt those roads that go through steep slopes, and I know they're not even needing retaining walls in those areas, but if you. You can't reconfigure the roads to avoid those slopes. There's just no way it would. You can't reach certain portions of the property all the way to the south without crossing those deep slopes and we're. You know, we're saying that the southern portion of the property is probably the most suitable for development. So that is unavoidable. You can't change the road slightly to avoid it because they go all the way across those sections. And the other area, really, there's two housing lots that contain steeper slope areas. But this is sort of to the north, you know, near the sand mine, but to the, you know, the north of this proposed sewage treatment facility. And you know, my understanding is those slopes are not natural slopes. They are manmade slopes from an old brush operation that occurred there. And it's possible you could in when the town puts the building envelopes down, avoid it, but. I don't really see any environmental benefit since they are not naturally occurring slopes. So it's very little disturbance to any, if any, other than the roads going across the the two natural slopes and. That is unavoidable. So I think they've done a really. A very good job working in conjunction with our town in redesigning this completely. To to avoid steep slopes. And Janice, do you want to weigh in on this piece too? This is, I know, very important to the town. You have to unmute.
Yeah, it's it's I I unmute and then they unmute me. So I'm sorry again, just a little delay on the unmuting. Yes, and I and like we said earlier, the all of the. Development is not occurring on on the slopes. So therefore, that is the most important thing, that. All the lots are on slopes less than ten percent. And only the slopes that are being impacted are the manmade ones. So I would just echo what the supervisor said. And also that the roadway follows a swell, so that, you know, I think that they've done a good job in in. The clearing envelopes as well. So it. The I don't see how you can condition it to be any different, but of course, you know, that's up to the commission. I think that working with them to redesign it is what what you would have probably conditioned if it was any other way. So.
Thank you. All right, so Supervisor Schneiderman, you find this conforms.
The current configuration conforms. Yes.
Thank you Supervisor Romaine.
I don't think this project avoids. Grading and development on steep slopes to the extent that it could have. So I'm going to vote no.
Okay, thank you. All right, Tana Riverhead Supervisor Aguirre.
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, I had a question for Janice, but I see that she left the room, so I would direct it to Supervisor Schneiderman.
She's running back. She's back.
Thank you. Hi, Janice.
Hi, I'm sorry. I dismissed what you said. I'm sorry.
No worries at all. I'll repeat it. So can you kindly confirm for me? Because obviously, as Jay has indicated. The town of Southampton, and specifically Marty, of course, was intimately involved, actually, in the latest iteration and the numerous changes of this project, correct?
That is true.
So is it fair and accurate to say then that based on the town's specific active involvement? That the developer utilized best management practices to the maximum extent practicable concerning this particular issue?
Best management practices really comes down to like the SWIP in terms of managing like the grading and the drainage and the stormwater runoff. So in that a best management practice is a little different than an actual. Plan objective. There's two different things. There's how you lay it out and then how you. Are going to move forward in the construction and the grading and drainage, and that's where the best management practices come in to play in that SWIP. But I would say in terms of best design or low impact design, they they've gone the distance in that regard. By by working with us to redesign it based on conditions in the field.
Okay, well, it certainly speaks to the numerous iterations and how that came about and equating what Supervisor Schneiderman has said. The applicant had to live with obviously the road configuration, right, in terms of the proximity of the project and the development, correct?
Yes, and by moving the 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 lots away from the slopes, you compacted that development once again for the clustering standard, but also for the. You know, sort of centralizing the infrastructure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so Tana Riverhead, what's your position on this?
Yes, of course.
Okay, approved. Okay, so finally Suffolk County Dale.
I'm going to defer to the town Southampton's prodigious work in this regard and conform.
Okay, thank you. So that's three members find it conforms and one does not. So guideline five point three point three point eight point two stabilization and erosion control. Construction of homes, roadways and private driveways on slopes greater than ten percent may be approved. Ethical review shows that sufficient care has been taken in the design of stabilization measures. Erosion control practices and structures so as to mitigate negative environmental impacts. Tana.
I couldn't hear you, John, but you're asking about five point three point three point eight point two. So. You know, again, this, you know, requires conformance with DC and the SWIP. You know, again, I, as I mentioned before, the original project called for some. Removal of four hundred thousand cubic yards of material. There's that's not being removed. At all, so that's staying there. So. You know, I think I think this meets that personally, but. Janice, did you want to add anything to that?
Yes, like I said earlier, that the they all the lots are on slopes less than ten percent. And I think that the an older staff report. Also found, I could be getting confused, but I believe that there it conformed in the staff report from August.
So Supervisor Schneiderman would because SWIP approvals involve, would would this be for Tana Southampton a conditional approval?
Yeah, so it'd be conditional.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Romaine, Tana Brook.
I'm going to abstain on this item.
Okay, thank you. Tana Riverhead Supervisor Aguirre.
Conditional approval.
Okay, thank you. Suffolk County, Mr. Dale.
Conditional approval.
Okay, thank you. So that's three members that find it conditionally approves and one abstention. From Tana Brookhaven. Next guideline, five point three point three point eight point three slope analysis. Tana Southampton Supervisor Schneiderman.
You know, I think Pine Barren staff determined this conformed, but. Janice, if you, we do have the, we have a slope analysis here, a very detailed slope analysis, so. That's all it says in the standard is slope analysis. We we have it. Janice, do you want to add anything to that?
I'm just trying to get to my other document. I'm sorry, the slope. Excuse me. These, so just in terms of the math, there's disturbance of only four acres. And it's only one point one percent of any steep slope disturbance. So I think that's, you know, could be gleaned to be to the maximum extent practicable. That would be my my other.
Hasn't seen the slope analysis. If you haven't seen, it's very detailed. I have a copy here, but I'm sure it's in the record as well. This was. The slope map was drawing number C dash one two two.
All right, and the just to just the. The guideline text, I apologize, states that project review is facilitated. If submissions contain a slope analysis showing slopes in the ranges of zero to ten percent, eleven to fifteen percent, and fifteen percent and greater. In areas with steep slopes, slope analysis maps should be. 11 to 15% and 15% and greater. In areas with steep slopes, slope analysis maps should be required. This can be satisfied with cross hatching or shading on the site plan for the appropriate areas.
Again, I just held it up, but that is the, you know, the slope map.
Okay.
So it amounts to 6.72 acres, which is 3.77% of the development area and 1.1% of the total project area, which is also, it's a lower percent because it's a larger open space. Just for, in terms of the math.
And, and, and some of that is manmade. I mentioned the brush area, but there's also another area where the ATV riders seem to have moved some sand around to try to create a, a, a more exciting course for themselves. So it's hardly natural slopes. There are some natural slopes in the area where the roads are, as I mentioned, that can't be avoided.
Okay. So Supervisor Schneiderman, do you find that this conforms?
Yes.
Thank you. Supervisor Romaine, Town of Brookhaven?
Based on the professional analysis done by the town of Southampton, yes, it conforms.
Thank you. Town of Riverhead Supervisor Aguirre?
Yes, it conforms.
Thank you. And finally Suffolk County, Mr. Dale? Thank you. So that's four out of four members find that it conforms to this guideline. The next guideline is 5.3.3.8.4 erosion and sediment control plans. Erosion sediment control plans should be required in areas of 15% or greater slopes. Again, turning to Town of Southampton Supervisor Schneiderman.
Yeah, I mean, I think this has largely been addressed. I might want to ask Janice to comment, Janice to comment. But obviously, you know, you, we can conditional it, condition it on the town and the DC in terms of the, the SWIP plan. Very limited in terms of any work that's being done on these slopes greater than 15% area. So, Janice, did you want to weigh in on that?
Sure. I just pointing back to the, also the response document was that they, they mentioned that de-watering will not be necessary in any area of the site that's going to be graded or developed. I think that's an important point. And they, obviously, as we've discussed all along, they've consolidated the development much farther to the south. And also, you know, the SWIP, that conditional, conditioned upon an approved SWIP that is, you know, conducted and all the construction activities conducted in accordance with that SWIP will ensure compliance.
So that's a conditional approval. You know, because erosion, erosion and sediment control plans are required and part of the town and DC review process.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Schneiderman, Town of Brookhaven Supervisor Romaine?
I'm almost inclined to approve this, except again, we're basing on a SWIP plan that should have been submitted and reviewed by now for this development that has been kicking around for several years and hasn't. So I'm just going to abstain on this one.
Okay, thank you. All right. Town of Riverhead Supervisor Aguirre?
Conditional approval.
Okay, thank you. Suffolk County, Mr. Dale?
Conditional approval.
Thank you. So the three out of the four members find that it can, conditionally conforms. And there's one abstention, Town of Brookhaven. Thank you. All right. Next is guideline 5.3.3.8.5 placement of roadways. Roads and driveway should be designed to minimize the traversing of slopes greater than 10% and to minimize cuts. Supervisor Schneiderman, Town of Southampton.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's hard to do this without everybody looking at the plans, but the roadways in here, you can see these are the steeper slope areas and they're in the protected area as you approach the core. The roadways don't go through steep slope areas except for these two, these two spots on your way out to the sewage treatment plant. And the, the steeper slope areas go all the way across. And in this area too, where you have the road going, you know, you, you can't reach this portion of the property without going through steep slopes. So, you know, the exact language, they should be designed to minimize the traversing of slopes. They clearly avoid all steep slopes except for those two areas. And again, they don't apparently need even retaining walls in those areas. They're following, for the most part, the natural grade of the road. So, you know, I think they meet that criteria.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Romaine?
I'll go along with that.
Okay, thank you. Town of Riverhead Supervisor Aguirre? Thank you. And finally Suffolk County, Mr. Dale? That's four members find that it conforms. Thank you. Next guideline, 5.3.3.8.6 retaining walls and control structures. Retaining walls and control, and erosion control structures should be provided for road and driveways which traverse slopes greater than 10%. Supervisor Schneiderman, Town of Southampton.
There are no retaining walls proposed that I'm aware of. So, or control structures. Somebody correct me if I'm wrong. So those, it says the retaining walls should be provided. For roads and driveways which traverse slopes greater than 10%. Janice, I'm not sure what to do with this one. There aren't any retaining walls provided. Maybe John.
They do say that grade transitions are going to use one on three slopes. So there will be no need for retaining walls as far as the, the applicant has illustrated.
Oh, it's an A and we can skip it.
Yeah, I was going to say, John, because are, does the standard imply that we must have retaining walls?
No, there was, there were retaining walls. It has been revised to, from when, what we understand now is there are no retaining walls in the plan now, but there were retaining walls. So if the, the plan has been revised to have no retaining walls, then there are none. But there were, and that's why we had this here. But they are saying now that there are not.
All right. Because the standard seems to imply that when you traverse slopes of 10%, you're supposed to have retaining walls, but I, I may be misreading that. There are none proposed though.
Okay, so we've, we've done away with that and we're on to the next item.
Well, I think, I think the, the answer, I think the answer is that it conforms because the standard says details of retaining walls and erosion control structures should be provided. So what Janice said is they revised it so that it's a three to one slope. So that is their erosion control structures. They've just regraded the area. So I think you can find that it conforms based on that representation.
Okay.
They don't need a wall because it's, it's, it's.
It's not 10% anymore because of that regret. Okay.
Yeah. So I think the answer is that so it conforms because they've made that modification.
All right. Thank you, John.
Okay. So Supervisor Schneiderman, that's a yes, it conformly?
It's not applicable. So yes.
Okay. Supervisor Romaine, Town of. Okay, thank you. Town of Riverhead Supervisor Aguirre? Okay, thank you. And Suffolk County, Mr. Dale?
Approve.
Thank you. Okay, that's four that find conforms. Standard 5.3.3.9.1 receiving entity for open space dedications. Applications must specify the entity to which dedicated open space will be transferred. Town of Southampton Supervisor Schneiderman.
Yeah, and it's clearly specified. So about half of the open space is going to the town through dedication and the other half to a homeowners association. But it will be, it'll be restricted as open space and covenanted as such. So the standard is just saying that you need to specify and it clearly is specified. Janice, did you want to add anything to that?
No, I would agree with that. 188 acres are being dedicated to the town.
Okay, thank you. So Town of Brookhaven Supervisor Romaine?
Based on Supervisor Schneiderman's explanation, this conforms.
Thank you. Town of Riverhead Supervisor Aguirre?
That's just one point. Janice, just to confirm, those acres that have been dedicated to the town are for conservation only, correct?
Conservation only, absolutely.
Thank you. And Suffolk County, Mr. Dale?
Conform.
Thank you. So that's four members find that it conforms. Thank you. Guideline 5.3.3.9.2 municipalities are strongly urged to maximize the use of the clustering technique. Where its usage would enhance adjacent open space and provide contiguous open space connections with adjacent open space parcels. Town of Southampton Supervisor Schneiderman.
Yeah, now the earlier, the earlier plan, I had some concerns. I, I know that Marty Shay did as well in terms of some of the larger lots to the north. And they reconfigured it and got rid of those, pushed everything to the south. You know, I think people who do this more often, you know, Janice maybe should comment on this in terms of clustering plans. But if you, if you look at it, you'll see that the housing is, is extremely clustered. In a regular housing subdivision, it would be clustered as well, but the lots would be larger for the most part. It all probably separated by, by fences where this is more of an open space design, smaller units surrounding the golf course fairway. But if you look at it, I think you'll agree that all the, the density of housing is all compressed in a very limited area in an effort to push it as far from the Pine Barrens core areas as possible. So Janice, I know as planning director, you deal with clustering all the time, but can you comment on this?
Well, just that, you know, that was the biggest objective with us really helping to meet, meet or exceed the standards. And through that revision and, and true clustering, the unfragmented contiguous open space is about 373 acres. So there's more open space, although it's more patchy, but that, that, those contiguous blocks, which were the most important objective of clustering, was what we, you know, were able to achieve by asking for those specific redesigns.
Janice, do you know, since this was originally, it's a density of one unit per five acre, these lots are not five acre lots. They're pretty small lots for the most part, right?
Yes, although I'd have to look back at the map to give you an exact estimate. Maybe Julie has that.
Some larger lots to the south end of the property, but for the most part, the clustered lots are relatively small.
Yeah. Well, I mean, there, there's. That are, you know, really compressed to be this sort of, as this started out, a more, you know, initially it was much more. The PDD was, was also, the objective was to cluster it. And I think the lots are less than 20, less than half an acre each is what the, the result is now.
In a typical housing subdivision.
Julie might have a better answer for that. I'm sorry.
In a typical house, clustered housing subdivision, an area zone one, you know, one house per five acre, the typical lot is not half an acre, right? It's, it's still larger than that, quite a bit.
Oh, yeah. It depends on the, you know, it depends on what's going on in that case, you know, in the five acre zones. If we're trying to, if there's an actual protective feature or if there's slopes or if there's, you know, an ag reserve, those things all come into play. But the, but, you know, as far as Southampton goes, the clustering, you know, this is one of the, the more condensed developments that we're getting in that five acre zone that would normally be much more spaced out. So yeah, I would agree with that.
That's, yeah, that's what I was looking for.
Okay. So Supervisor Schneiderman, is that a yes in regard to conformance?
I believe they conform to the clustering, yes.
Okay, thank you. Town of Brookhaven Supervisor Romaine?
Believe that they probably conform to the clustering. I think however, by doing so, they created fragmented open space. So I'm going to abstain on this one.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Town of Riverhead Supervisor Aguirre? Thank you. And Suffolk County, Mr. Dale? Thank you. So that's three members find that it conforms and one abstains. Thank you. Guideline 5.3.3.9.3 protection dedicated open space. Proposed open space should be protected with covenants, conservation easements or dedications that specify proper restrictions on its use and contingencies with its future management. Town of Southampton Supervisor Schneiderman?
Yeah, so we've sort of already talked about this, but yeah, the open space will have to be protected, deeded, covenanted. The town will actually be the fee owner of a good portion of it, but those, the, the property, the HOA property, which is close to 200 acres, will be protected by conservation easements, acceptable to the town. And Janice, did you want to contribute to that as well?
I'm just to say that there's a total proposed open space of 402 acres as part of this project. So there's a lot of open space there. And just balancing it between the HOA and the, and the town, all that land is going to be, you know, not developed, completely protected.
We do, you know, have an enforcement mechanism too for private, you know, conservation easements. We're very on top of these things to make sure that there's no violations. We regularly police these areas.
So Supervisor Schneiderman, do you find that this conforms?
Yeah, it's, it's a question of filing the proper covenants, but absolutely.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Supervisor Romaine, Town of Brookhaven?
Based on the explanation of Supervisor Schneiderman, this conforms.
Thank you. Okay. Town of Riverhead Supervisor Aguirre?
Conforms.
Thank you. Suffolk County, Mr. Dale? Thank you. So that's four members find that it conforms. Thank you. Guideline 5.3.3.10.1 best management practices in regard to agriculture is not applicable. Go to guideline 5.3.3.11.1 cultural resource consideration. Development proposals should account for review and provide protection measures for established recreational trails and trail corridors, active recreation sites, scenic corridors, roads, vistas and viewpoints, location in critical resource areas, sites of historical significance, sensitive archaeological areas identified by the New York State Historic Preservation Office or the New York State Museum. Town of Southampton Supervisor Schneiderman?
I get to go first on all these. Well, you know, we, we do have, you know, we do have that January 30th, 2018 letter from State Historic Preservation Office saying that it's their opinion that the project will have no impact on archaeological and historic resources listed in or eligible for the New York State National Register of Historic Places. And they do certainly provide buffers for trails, recreational trails. You know, I, I do question with any of these properties, the potential for archaeological resources pertaining to the indigenous people of the area. I, I don't know, Janice, do we require a stage 1A on a property like this through the planning board? But other than that, I think it, you know, the development certainly meets the, the criteria in this particular guideline. Janice?
I don't actually have that. If we, if we had required it in the. I know it was in the EIS, but I'm not, okay.
In the EIS, yeah.
Okay, good. So, so they did do an archaeological assessment at that point.
They did.
Yeah.
A stage 1A? Is that what they did?
Yes. The only, yeah.
Yeah, it's possible the planning board might go further with that, I suspect, but.
Well, if they were commencing any kind of digging activities and something was game across, then that would be a different story altogether, but.
Okay. All right. So, John, that's, you know, I think they, they certainly meet that cultural resource consideration guideline.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Schneiderman. Town of Brookhaven Supervisor Romaine?
I'm going to abstain on this because I feel the project fails to provide minimal buffers, particularly on the east side of the site as it relates to sufficient protection of all trails in that area and other cultural resources. So I'm just going to abstain.
Okay, thank you. Town of Riverhead Supervisor Aguirre?
Conforms.
Conforms, thank you. Suffolk County, Mr.?
Conform.
Thank you. So that's three members find it conforms and one member abstains. Thank you. So that's, uh, three members find it conforms and one member abstains. A guideline five point three point three point eleven point two, inclusion of cultural resources and applications. Development proposals should note established recreation and educational trails and trail corridors, active recreation sites, scenic corridors, roads, vistas and viewpoints. A development proposal may be disapproved or altered. Local municipality determines that the development proposal in its form may have a significant negative impact on any of the above resources. Town of Southampton Supervisor Schneiderman?
Yeah, I may defer to Janice on this one because this was referred to the planning board. Um, and, uh, you know, they would have made that determination, um, if there was significant negative impacts to any of the above resources. The town board did do secret review on this as well. Uh, did not find that that was an issue, but, uh, Janice, do you want to add anything?
I would just point to that, um, the Nelson and Pope response from the applicant and, and, you know, that they reconfigured the golf holes to the central and south portion of the site farther west to maximize that separation between the town trails, um, and the land to the, um, and to the east. Um, so hopefully with some landscaping treatment in the final plat review, that could also be something that could be conditionally uh, required if the, you know, if there's like real, you know, based on the vegetation that's there and what could be supplemented might be a nice way to offset any view impacts. But I mean, when you're on a trail and you walk and see a, you know, natural golf course, I'm not sure that it's a rec, it's an impact to a cultural, you know, to a recreational resource. So it depends on what you're buffering the view from, you know, if there's house lots there and you want to create like some more buffer, that would be a good, you know, recommendation. But other than that, if you're just walking through a natural area and you're seeing some of the golf course, I, I don't think that's a bad view shed. So I would say it meets it, but you can always augment, we can always augment it in the final plat process if, if you wanted to condition it.
Well, that condition could come at the town level too, because
Sure.
You know. So I'm going to say that it meets that condition.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Schneiderman. Uh, town of Brookhaven Supervisor Romaine?
I'll agree with Supervisor Schneiderman based on the fact that he has indicated that they'll look at the possibility of augmenting, uh, the buffering, uh, that would exist. Is that a fair commentary?
That's fair, Ed. But that would happen at the planning board level.
I, I understand you don't have control of that, but so, yes, I would say we conform with that condition.
Okay, thank you. Town of Riverhead Supervisor Aguirre?
Yes, conforms.
Thank you. Suffolk County, Mr. Dale?
Well, at this point, before I, um, render, uh, the county's opinion, I will share a quote from Oscar Wilde. Uh, and that is to the effect that golf is a good walk spoiled, um, and I'll leave it at that. And vote that it conforms.
Okay, thank you. So that's four members find that it conforms. Thank you. Okay, the next guideline, five point three point three point eleven point three, protection of scenic and recreational resources. Protection measures for scenic and recreational resources should include but not be limited to retention of visually shielding natural buffers, replacement of degraded or removed natural visual buffers using native species, use of signs which are in keeping in both style and scale with the community character and similar measures. Uh, town of Southampton Supervisor Schneiderman?
You know, the, there's buffers throughout that are providing some vegetative screening. That's, I think, what my colleague in Brookhaven was saying was creating some fragmenting in his opinion. But I think those, those are important, um, to separate some of the, uh, development areas from neighbors. Um, or from the public at large. You know, you can't really develop a property like this without some visual impacts. I, I don't know that, you know, as Janice said, I'm not sure. You know, the golf course is a, so much a negative visual impact as, as compared to some other types of development. Um, I, I don't really think the housing is really going to be visible for the most part. But I think that they certainly have done their best to, you know, protect these things. I, I don't think it can ever be zero. So, uh, I, I think they had, they certainly have met the criteria. Janice, do you want to weigh in on this?
Just that same echoing what you said. And again, they, you know, they shifted the golf holes further west and we will, you know, look at the final plat to make sure that, you know, there's no impacts in terms of the visual uh, resource, you know, from any, you know, adjacent public resource or open space. Um, and also, you know, I would note that town of Southampton has a dark skies code, any nighttime lighting. We are very, um, serious about maintaining our dark skies at night. So, uh, they must comply no matter what with our dark sky code with any street lighting or even lighting on buildings or even um, so, you know, house lights, those things, you know, we will make sure to, uh, review in the site plan component of that. So it could be conditioned on, you know, as far as the lighting goes. I noticed that was one of the comments at one point, nighttime lighting conditions, um, that you can condition it on that if you wanted to or, or, you know. It will meet it regardless.
With the town's dark sky legislation, is what I'm saying. I, I don't have objection to that. Um, I'm not sure that, well, I guess that is part of the visual concern here. So maybe it does fall onto this guideline. It's certainly something that's going to come up at the town level. Uh, I don't know, it's, it's so much fitting as a Pine Barrens criteria. Though it, you know, in retrospect, you know, obviously light pollution does have an impact on ecology.
No doubt.
And, uh, you know, certainly the more that's done to minimize light pollution, the better for the, you know, the, the creatures that inhabit the woodlands around this property. Many of which I'm sure are nocturnal.
I will point out the guideline though does not mention dark skies or lighting specifically.
Yeah, and I'm So I might be a little bit concerned about putting a condition that this, that was unrelated.
Agreed. I would recommend that if the town has that provision, the town can imply, uh, implement it. But this isn't one of those conditional type of guidelines in the plan.
It, it does refer to signs and community character and similar measure. So it's not, uh, it is related, lighting, but that is more of a town requirement.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't specifically enumerate here that things like it requires Suffolk County Health Department approval or DEC approval.
Could I suggest that, uh, it simply be conditioned upon compliance with the Southampton Town Code? Take into account all those various issues? Um, Dan, you, of course you can, but the whole project is conditioned on compliance with the town code because if it doesn't comply, it won't be approved at the town level.
Okay.
So the commission's sort of establishing a floor. If the town wants to implement more restrictive measures, they're free to do so.
Okay, point well taken. You know, I think it does meet that guideline, you know, the protection of scenic and recreational resources. So, I don't know that it needs to be conditioned. The town has other criterias besides just the Pine Barrens conformity in terms of community character, light pollution.
Sorry, I tend to conflate the two because I'm so used to really dealing with the town's, uh, standards. So that could just be my, you know, extra commentary.
Well, based on Jay's, uh, based on Jay's vote, I'm going to vote the same way, but this will be the last vote I take. I see Emily Pines is here. At four o'clock, the Association of Supervisors for Suffolk County are meeting to discuss vaccination rollouts and participation by the town. So I'm sure the other two supervisors are aware of that. I'm going to go on that call. I think it's important that I participate. So I'm going to ask Emily Pines if she would represent the town for the remainder of this meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate it, Ed. I would like to be on that call as well. I'm going to stay here. I have several people on that call for me.
I gotta go.
We have one left.
We only have one left after this. So, so on this, on this particular guideline Supervisor Schneiderman, you're saying yes?
I'll go with Jay.
Supervisor Romaine says yes. Uh, town of Riverhead Supervisor Aguirre?
Yes, in conformance.
Okay, and finally Suffolk County, Mr. Dale?
Yes.
Okay, so that's four for conformity. Last one is, uh, five, guideline five point three point three point eleven point four roadside design and management. Undisturbed portions of the roadside should be maintained in a manner that protects the scenic features of these areas. Clearing including that aisles, driveways, access and parking is not precluded within these roadside areas provided that appropriate buffers are maintained, that manmade structures meet standards consistent with the character of the area. Town of Southampton?
Yeah, I believe that's, if that conforms, I, I think the staff report also concluded that. But, uh, Janice, do you have anything you need to say on that one?
No, no comment. I would agree that it conforms.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Kevin, Ms. Pines?
I will, I will agree with the town of Southampton that it conforms.
Thank you. Okay, town of Riverhead Supervisor Aguirre or Dan?
Yes, it conforms.
Thank you. And finally Suffolk County, Mr. Dale? Okay, thank you folks. We've reached the end and I, John?
Isn't there one more? There's, it's not applicable, but do we need to state the last one that it's not applicable?
Right, so, yeah, uh, so we find that it's not applicable. This is commercial industrial compliance with Suffolk County sanitary code or commercial and industrial development. Applications shall comply with the provision of the Suffolk County Sanit- sanitary code as applied by the Suffolk County Department of Health Services.
We, John, we didn't, Supervisor Schneiderman, we did not make a determination on the ones that don't apply.
Okay.
Don't apply. So if you want to do a blanket resolution for all of those that are NA, you can now that they all, not a resolution that they all conform, that's fine, but I don't think it's necessary because by definition, they're not applicable.
Okay.
And you will have a chance to review a commission's decision that will be drafted in, in accordance with your direction today, next week. And at that point, it could say that they all, it conforms with those non-applicable ones.
Okay, so at, at this point, we have reviewed all the standards and guidelines. And, uh, from my, uh, accounting here, it appears that the commission, the majority of the commission have found that, uh, the Lewis Road planned residential development conforms with all the standards and guidelines. Uh, John, correct me if I'm wrong?
That is correct.
We'll move on Wednesday.
That's right. So staff will appre- uh, prepare appropriate, uh, documents uh, for your consideration and, uh, uh, review uh, for the next meet, regular meeting on Wednesday, January twentieth.
And I just want to point out, um, one thing that the town of Riverhead, uh, we're going to move the discussion on Lewis to after the public hearing next Wednesday. So that'll be following a three o'clock public hearing just due to some scheduling issues that we have. So that conversation will occur after three. So if the members of the public that want to join just for Lewis Road, we'll see you after three at some point, the public hearing, you know, anywhere from now zero minutes to a half hour to, you know, I would check in at some point after three.
Okay, so I don't think there's, there's no need for, um, for an advisory session. So at this point, uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
I'm sorry, there's one last thing. I had sent an email today regarding a revised meeting schedule. Uh, I wanted to confirm you received that, just so I know you folks received it.
Yeah, Dan, we've put that on the agenda. So that will be on there. There's a revised agenda that's going out. That will be on, on consideration for, uh, next, uh, the next meeting on the twentieth.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So is there a motion? I'm sorry, there was a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Second.
Second and Jay?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The abstentions, motion carries. Uh, the meeting is, has ended. Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you next Wednesday.